Sorry. We're going to get ourselves started this evening. First, I think I'll ask Mr. Modesto Darius, would you open up Pelham, please?
Sure. I move to call the Pelham to order.
And, thank you. And Catherine Amherst?
Yeah, I'd like to call the Amherst School Committee meeting to order on June 24th at 7:03 PM.
Thank you. And then I need to open up Region because I think you received the email today, for those of you who are on Region. We do actually have to vote a chair today. We checked after our last meeting and the attorney's firm stated to us that we can't go a lag of a month, two months, without a chair for the Region. So the first order of business would be, we have to kind of reconsider that original vote, and then we have to choose a chair. Mr. O'Brien?
So I'd like to make a motion to reconsider our vote regarding reorganization from the Tuesday, June 10th, 2014 meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Well, he already made the motion, but I wanted to, before we got to that motion, to just, knowing that that motion would come to the floor, to...
I think it's got to be all.
There you go.
I wanted to ask the committee to extend the time necessary to adequately discuss a chair. In our last time when we discussed putting off the chair, the reason for it was to have a conversation about what the chair should do and the parameters and privileges of the chair, which in, you know, the year past has come into some issue. So I think it is appropriate and very important for us to put more time on the agenda to discuss, you know, the role of the chair. So that's, I guess that's part of discussion for the motion of should we reconsider.
Okay. So I think maybe I'll start and other people can jump in, those who've been on the committee for a bit. The role of the chair is to literally chair the regional meetings. The vice chair sits in for the chair should the chair be absent for whatever reason. The chair works with, in this case, the other two chairs, and we develop the agendas together for the school committee meetings. They also have a role on the Union 26, the 26, where the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary sit with the three members from Pelham in terms of hiring a superintendent and addressing salary. And I think just there are certain roles where the school committee chair has to sign things like the negotiated contract for Region as we do for Amherst and Pelham. And I think I hit the basic requirements of the chair.
I think we should vote this motion up or down quickly and then decide if we should, you know, fill out this conversation about the role of the chair that go above and beyond the minimum requirements of the chair. The prerogative of executive sessions, the prerogative of dissemination of information, the prerogative of setting agendas are all things in the past year that we've experienced are powers of the chair that can shape the discussion of the school board. And I want to have a big conversation, a bigger, a more full conversation, especially with our new members here, about how we want to operate as a body. So to me, it's a lot, it's a lot more than just deciding, any me, mine, and you, who should be chair and then moving on. I think we should vote up or down whether we want to reconsider our last, the thing that we convened and described and discussed last time. We should vote up and down whether or not we want to keep it that way or not, and then move to whether or not we should put more time on the agenda if we have to choose a chair today. And I hear you saying that the lawyer said we have to, but we should, I don't think we're prepared to without having this discussion, which we wanted to push to the retreat, but if we can't, we have to have that discussion now.
I'm wondering if there's a term limit or a time that the chair is required to serve? Do we have to vote a chair for a set amount of time, or could we vote a chair until our retreat?
I mean, it's my understanding, we just can't be without one. So I guess the committee at any time could say we'd like to, I mean, we're forced to reorganize right after we have our new members, but I don't know anything that would...
So...
...preclude us. Is that right, Kathy? I'm looking at her. So, no, we could revote in August, should we need to.
So, I mean, I don't know if I want to make an amendment to the motion, or, but my intent is to say that perhaps we should today consider voting for a chair who will serve until August at our retreat, at which point we will reconsider and have a chance to have some of the discussions that we seem to want to have at our previous meeting regarding this subject.
So how do we address that? I'm looking at Rick.
I think, then, it could be fashioned as a friendly amendment.
Sure.
Well, I think, I think the motion is specific about reconsidering the vote.
Reconsidering, right.
So I don't know. It would be appropriate after we reconsider the vote probably to talk about that.
Okay. Okay, so are we okay with just taking the vote at this point? Okay, so the vote is to reconsider the motion made at our prior school committee meeting regarding the chair. So, all in favor? And this is for Region. So do we have everybody? Yeah, okay. Trevor, opposed?
I'm not in favor of reconsidering. I might as well leave.
Okay. So, opposed? Trevor? Yeah, cool. Okay. So, at this point, I think we need to have a motion for a chair and then a discussion. So, do we have any motions? Catherine?
Yes, I'd like to, well, I have a nomination.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Sorry.
I'd like to nominate Lawrence as chair. He's a teacher. He was a grievance officer in Belcher Town. I think he is fair. I think he's thoughtful. I think he's a very hard worker. And I think he's done a very good job in a very tough role, stepping in as interim chair. And I think he'd do a good job as chair, permanent chair, moving forward.
Is there a second?
I just have a, now I'm a little confused because I thought we're not actually going to have a discussion about permanent chair, or maybe, maybe...
Just until, until...
Okay.
Would you like to, can you amend your...
I'm not making a motion. I'm just nominating him as chair.
Oh, thank you.
We can have a discussion.
Okay.
About how long he would serve, but he would be considered permanent chair as opposed to interim.
Oh, oh, I see. When you said the word permanent, you're just saying for whenever we decide.
Yes, not for, not for life. He's not chair for life. Okay.
Don't do that.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have a...
I may, before making further nominations from the floor, I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion at this time that whomever is elected to this position, I move that we set a limit on the term of the position of chair of the Regional School Committee until our next meeting, the retreat in August.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Rick?
Can we say it's to the end of the retreat? Because it would be good to have kind of the chair covering the retreat.
Okay, look to Shabazz, is that?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, and... Opposed, one. Okay, so now we're going back to, are there other nominations for chair? I heard Lawrence. Shabazz?
Yes, I move, I would like to nominate Rick Hood for the position of chair. I think we are at a place in our end time where someone with his background, his history, his experience, particularly around matters of open meeting law, having navigated complaints in the past and learned from that, I think this would be a very good time to have someone like him through this period leading up to the, to the retreat where we can have this fuller discussion.
I appreciate that, but I'd really rather not. I, I, just, two years was enough for me for a while. And I feel like Lawrence is a neutral guy, like I'm a neutral guy. I think, you know, it's going to be, it'll be fine, and I can give my advice as needed as a, as a member of the committee.
Maybe you'll give advice to him. Shabazz?
So, respecting your right to decline, I really think it's an important time that someone who is not only neutral, but someone who is really prepared to work to facilitate reaching real consensus and bringing this group together, because there are differences and there are polarities here that, that we really need some, someone who has, is really at a, at a place to sort of, just through those two months, or until that August meeting, to be on hand, to work with the superintendent on what is needed during that time, or may be called upon to act as the chair during that time when we're not having plans for meetings, but also to work for us, to work to bring us together at the retreat and plan out with the rest of us, in collaboration with the rest of us, to plan a retreat that can really serve all our interests. And so with that in mind, if, I would then nominate Trevor Baptiste.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, I think at this point, unless there are other nominations, we need to go and do a roll call. So it'd be just the regional members who would make a statement of who they would like to see as chair. Am I doing that procedurally correct? Okay, thank you. Other nominations? Okay. So, we're going to start with Dan. You have to say which, who you'd like to see as chair.
Can I abstain?
You can.
I'd like, I would like to see, well, you know, no, I'm not sure if I can, why aren't we not just having a vote?
That's, we have to do when we have two different, we do roll calls.
You're asking him to vote, or say what? You're asking him to vote, right?
Vote.
She's asking you to vote.
I'm going to vote for Trevor. I seconded his nomination, so.
Okay.
Lawrence?
Okay.
O'Brien?
Trevor Baptiste.
Lawrence O'Brien? Lawrence O'Brien.
Me, Lawrence O'Brien.
Lawrence.
Me.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So Lawrence, I will turn to you. Thank you, Trevor, for your willingness to step up. I'm turning this to Lawrence. Before we go to vice chair, can I just say one thing, too? I didn't introduce Tara, and I feel badly about that. Tara Luce is joining us as one of our members, our newest member from Pelham. Welcome Tara.
Thank you.
So I actually do want to be in, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now you need your vice chair.
Oh, okay. So, so now we need to, I'll take nominations for vice chair for the Region. Mr. Shabazz?
I nominate Trevor Baptiste.
I seconded.
I seconded.
Okay, so you can go ahead and do any...
Okay.
So, we're doing another roll call?
Well, any other nominations?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Any other nominations? Sorry, I didn't mean to speed it up. Okay, not hearing any nominations. I assume you are unanimously elected to vice chair.
Excellent, congratulations.
Do we need to elect a secretary?
I think typically what we do is have, you may elect Debbie S. Moreland in that role, who has been for a period of time, but...
I'd actually like to ask for unanimous acclamation to keep Debbie as our secretary.
Exactly.
Okay. So, thank you very much. Do you want to ask for the minutes for Pelham?
Sure. Can I get the motions for the June 5th Pelham meeting? Motion to accept those minutes? Did everybody get them?
I shall move.
So this is just a vote of the Pelham Committee?
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion? Hearing no second? We need no comment? Go ahead.
I have a comment, and I don't know if this is, I didn't read these thoroughly, and I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, Mr. Modesto. No, Darius, we voted, I call you Darius. Where it describes our, our vote on Park versus MCAS, we all voted unanimously for Park, but I don't know if it's reflected in the minutes because I didn't read it with a fine-tooth comb yet, that at the end of the vote, I don't know if your comments are reflected in the minutes. Should they be, or Debbie, was that, not necessarily? That's right. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, Darius, if you don't want them in the minutes, I understand. And so I'm asking, should that be reflected in the minutes or not?
No, because I don't believe it's part of discussion.
Okay.
Toward the vote.
Okay.
Any other comments toward the minutes? Hearing none, those in favor pressing votes?
Thank you. I think you have a second, Lawrence.
Yeah, I'm, oh, no, no, I have, no, I have.
So I'll take a motion to accept the minutes from the June 10th, 2014 Regional Meeting?
So moved.
A second? Thank you.
Catherine, Steve?
Are there any questions, any concerns about the minutes?
I think there may be some spellings, but I can come back on that at another time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shabazz. So, looks like no other concerns, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the June 10th meeting, please raise your hand. All those abstaining? Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to public comment. And I was hoping that everybody, I asked Ms. Westmoreland to make a copy of this before, before I call on anybody. I hope, does everybody have a copy of the public comment? Does everyone have a public comment, a copy of the public comment policy? They're on the back. If you could go get them, it would be really helpful. And I can wait, or we can wait.
While waiting?
Yes. Mr. Shabazz?
One of the things I was saying about spellings on there is that some of the members of, for public comment, particularly Michael Mongeau, who we've misspelled his name in the previous one, and he brought it to my attention, as well as possibly others, but I recognize that without us signing comment cards or having a sign-in that is legible, it's, it's really impossible when our secretary is putting these in final forms to know the correct spelling of the name. So if there is a desire to, if there is a way to think about that, and I suggest that perhaps as people would come up, and you not only say your name, but if you care to have it spelled properly, to, to give us the spelling.
That's an excellent suggestion.
But it won't be docked against your, your time.
No, it will not. Thank you very much for pointing that out. So I'd just like to take a moment. We have a very tall agenda at the meeting this evening, and something actually in the district that I work in prompted me last week to look at our public comment policy. And when I looked it over, I realized that we haven't been following it for the last year. Does everybody have, if people don't have it, you can look on, that would be great. So it's really important to me as a public body that we follow our policies. And the public comment policy sort of, I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to put on my teacher hat for a minute. When I first got into teaching, I taught government, and I taught US government. And one of the themes of the course was that in US government, in our history, there's a constant struggle, there's a constant struggle that we have balancing amongst other things, liberty and order. And I asked my students to think long and hard about that when we looked at public policy. And I think in the case of what we do at these meetings, probably our public comment policy is the best representation of that struggle between liberty and order. So I'd like to go over the parts of this that are about liberty, and it's highlighted. So if everyone has it in front of them, just like to make sure that everybody understands this is the meat of the stuff that we're going to follow today and possibly henceforth. So if a resident or other individual would like to comment to the school committee, he or she may do so by mail or email at any time. Comments may be sent to the chair, to an individual member, to the entire committee. Mail and email sent to school committee members in their role as school committee members are considered to be public documents. I urge the voters, all constituents, to use that avenue to get in touch with us at any time. It's probably your 24-hour option at petitioning, petitioning your government officials. That's the liberty part. Now, when we go down to the public comment section, it says, "In order that many individuals who wish to be heard before the committee have such a chance, and to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted." I'm just going to go down to the highlighted. Public comment normally will be for a period no longer than 15 minutes, which is what we will be following tonight. Speakers generally will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak, and with the help of Mr. Champagne in our IT department, will have a very transparent way of following that. And I like that because I notice it's very effective at town meeting, at keeping civil, orderly, but very, very thoughtful discussion going. People who speak at town meeting, when they're commenting on an article, have three minutes. And I think it would behoove us to adopt that here, or just follow it. Then go down to number six. Speakers may offer comments and opinions about the school operations and programs that concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel, nor against any member of the school community, either by name or by reference to position. So if we could flip it over. And the last is number nine. A group of residents appearing at a meeting to express favor or opposition to a particular item should designate one member of the group as a spokesperson to be heard on the topic. So I encourage people right now to take a moment, if you're here as a group, to offer public comment, to consider a spokesperson for your group. I will, I'm happy to come out and, and cede to the person you chose. But the way, the way the math works is we have 15 minutes devoted to public comment. With a three-minute max, that means we'll be hearing from five people tonight, and we have a lot of issues. So, yes, I'll entertain a question from that woman.
Yes, I, I think that there are, there's a limit, and it just began tonight for this meeting, that I find that ironic, but if there's a limit of three minutes, does that mean that somebody can defer their three minutes to somebody else?
Yes, I am happy to have someone cede their time to somebody else, but what we'll do is we will stick to the three-minute rule. So we have, we have a clock, and it will hand off, and I need to know, I'm going to allow someone to cede it to one person, and no more than that. Yes, ma'am.
At town meeting, they do, do three minutes, but they can extend it, and there's no limit.
Yes.
I mean, there's a limit, but there's no real limit, so that's not quite the same. I taught you that history, too. And we're already off the schedule.
Right, and that's actually...
And you were going to only give us 10 minutes on this agenda, so I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm sorry, I'm learning, I'm on a learning curve here.
So...
A lot of confusion about this to me.
Yeah, and so am I. And actually, the way I would...
I think I'm like teaching democracy, so I can work that out.
Yeah, and, and the way I would interpret this is, is we followed it, and then we stopped following it. And now we're going back to following it. And I'll use, and I'll, this is the last thing I'll say, and take no more comment. I, I'm also active in my union. And anybody else, I, I assume, there are lots of people active out there in their union. And written contracts, the written word of a contract always trumps past practice. And unfortunately, we've had, I think, an unfortunate past practice this year where we've deviated from it. So, no, actually, I'm not going to take anymore. So we're going to go on to public comment, and I'm going to select five people. Again, I encourage, if there's a group of people who are interested in speaking, to designate someone. Do you... Actually, sorry, go ahead. So here's... Well, that's, that's fine. Then I will just, we're still going to have 15 minutes and five people. Yeah, you have to. Yeah. And this is, this is the last comment I'll take about this, because we really do have to get, get this going.
Okay. I just produce this document.
Yeah.
And I could agree with it, because I came here tonight to look for a venue where I could address this committee, certain things that have come to my attention. And, but what I will do is, the question is this, I submit, as I, I could submit a statement. Now, when am I going to hear feedback as I submit my statement?
Okay. So now I'll select five people to contribute to public document.
The answering of my question.
No, I, we, we don't, we don't, I'm not, I'm not going to answer the question right now.
But in the policy, you said you could answer that. You said that in the policy. You gave a piece of paper saying I can answer a separate question. Then we asked you a simple question.
I want to know when, if I should miss something to the superintendent, or whatever, the school committee, or to the chair, or yourself, when do I get a chance to get a response?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, oh, yeah, sure, by email. Right, of course. Thank you very much, Mr. Hood. That's exactly, as, and I can't speak for other members, but I have a policy of getting back within 24 hours.
Okay. Okay, so I'll produce it again and see.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much. So now we'll move to the, the five people who would like to speak. And what we'll do is I'll just select the five. So if we could have a show of hands, I'll come out. So if number one could come forward?
I protest.
Okay.
You should be ashamed of yourself for trying to shut us down. You have a room full of people in here that are trying to speak and practice democracy. This is democracy. You should be ashamed of yourself, Mr. O'Brien. You should be ashamed of yourself, and I will name you by name.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. If we could have number one.
We protest. Mic check. This is supposed to be a democratic process.
If we could have number one.
You're wrong. Do you see the resistance?
So, if you would please...
We came here, I came here today to talk about how you are supposed to keep...
If you would not stop, I'll ask for an adjournment of the meeting. If you could please give it to number, whoever number one is, could you please come to the microphone, please?
This is very awkward. This is just unbelievable. Is this going to be on?
I think it is. I think it is.
Dan, can you look to see if that's on? There we go.
Okay, so, once you introduce yourself, I'll start the time.
Please put me down as Andrea Battle, retired educator. I am a grandmother, but I'm a retired educator. I looked over the evaluation procedures, and I'm from a community here that is, does not think that all students are being served. How we can put excellence and whatever when there are very unhappy students and parents and staff members in the school district is just beyond me. And I'm just surprised because, again, I'm from a system where the superintendent does not lead the meetings, they serve at the behest of the committee. So maybe in Massachusetts, that's not true. But anyway, that shocked me, because, you know, 35 years in education, what do I know? Anyway, the point I'm making is, I don't think things are excellent for quite a few people. To be brown and black in this valley, Latino, black, Asian, and even special needs, et cetera, you're not being served the way, this is not a, it may be a happy valley for some people, but it's not a happy valley for many of us and our children. some people, but it's not a happy valley for many of us and our children and our grandchildren. And so, not to say get rid of anybody, but just, we're asking people to go to excellence and use some of us and the resources that there are, and I don't understand, and, and it looks like you're trying to shut down comment, and I'm only saying that because you took 25 minutes of the five minutes. So obviously, you do veer off of it, and you use town meeting, which allows almost everyone to speak that submits their name or raises their hand. And even people who are not committee members of town meeting are allowed to speak if given permission. So you're not using town meeting, you're really not using the Constitution, you're using a tactic that really makes us feel a little insecure because we're already not happy. Our children, many of our children are not happy. And I'm sorry, you can't make a judgment, I mean, you know, the slave masters thought the slaves were happy too. So I'm saying, you can't always judge, because what you think is okay, is okay. It is not okay. And I, I'm just sorry that I was chosen, in a sense, because I feel guilty that you're, you're limiting this, but you didn't limit all that voting and up and down and whatever for 25 minutes, so. I shake your hand.
Thank you very much. So if number two could come up.
Mr. O'Brien, can I say something?
No, I, I see, you're doing 29 minutes.
I defer the last 29 minutes to someone.
All right, it's 23 seconds.
Well, I'll take, can I say something in 20 seconds?
Uh, let's, I think the public, it's the public's chance to speak. Thank you, thank you, Trevor. So, okay, so, reset, good reset. So if number two could come up. If number two could come up, thank you very much. I'll have it just- Go ahead, go ahead, and I'll wait, I'll count about 30 seconds to the back clock, and then start, so not to play with this.
I don't, I hope I don't take the whole three minutes. I'm Sarah Hourback, I'm a resident of Amherst, I have three children who've gone through the schools, one's a graduate, the other is middle school and one in the high school. I want to take a minute and just thank all of you for your public service.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate-
Here we go.
Are you okay now?
Yeah.
I appreciate what you do and the time you take away from your families and your personal lives, and the dedication and thought that you give to our schools and our community and the policies. I don't think our schools are perfect, I think they're far from that. My own experience has been that faculty and the administration have always been responsive, that path has not always been clear, but I've always felt that I've been heard and that there's been good and steady attempts to deal with the issues my children have had. I recognize that my experience is not everyone's, and I know that there's a lot more work to be done. But I just wanted to come tonight and give voice to my own experience, and also thank you and the administration and the faculty. I think it takes a tremendous amount of dedication on a day-in and day-out basis. I am not an educator, and I'm happy I'm not an educator, but I respect the skills and the experience, and I think that our schools are moving in the right direction. I do see progress, I do see policies, I see programs, I see, I'm a member of the high school council, and I hear about the troubles in the school, but I also hear about the very tangible things that are being done to improve those. And I welcome Mr. Shabazz's comments about everyone needing to come together in this town and on this committee and in this school, and I ask that people do that. I think the time of the embattledness of what we've been experiencing needs to end, and this year, I think, has been a very, very challenging year for all members of the community and the schools. And so I will cede my, my last minute. I will say, I hope we have a good summer, and a productive and a thoughtful one, and thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I may, can I use her last minute? With permission? Thank you.
Sure.
Don't start it yet, I'll give the spelling. My name is Katie Lazdowski, L-A-Z, as in zebra, D as in dog, O-W-S-K-I. Good Polish name. I just wanted to jump in here to respond as one white woman to another, and I have prepared something, so I'm going to read that. As we travel through Amherst Center, we see those signs that say, "Amherst is the perfect place to live, the perfect place to work, the perfect place to learn, but I would be remiss and I would be abusing my white privilege if I did not stop and ask, who is benefiting? Who in the schools? For which children is this the perfect place to learn? As this school draws, this school year draws to an end, it's time that we reflect on our performance, and yes, there are some good things that go on, but do we really deserve the A-plus that we so freely flaunt as a town? Or is this just propaganda, a facade we display to deter us from digging too deep and discovering the institutional racism that exists in our town and in our schools? A year in review. In October, graffiti containing the N-word is found in a bathroom on Carolyn and on Carolyn Gardner's classroom door." I'll return-
Could you just pause? Well, you know what, no, actually, we have 30 seconds, so-
We're being civilized. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we have 30 seconds.
Did we improve throughout the course of this year? Earlier this spring, a note with the N-word and the word gun in the same sentence is deemed non-threatening. As the school year closes, Carolyn Gardner is no longer in her classroom, her students no longer benefit from her intellect and her excellent teaching practice. Under the leadership, where do we find ourselves? Have we succeeded? Far from it. Not only have we been unsuccessful, it's been a pitiful performance. And what message are we sending our students as a result of the lethargic nature which we've dealt with these issues?
Thank you, actually, that's, so that's the extra time.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
I just hope that when my son goes to school, he knows how to understand his white privilege, and that he's not going to a school that models it, how to abuse that white privilege.
Thank you very much. So if, could speaker number three come up, please? I believe I had given it to that gentleman, but I lost the number.
That is my, I'd like to offer that to someone here that may have children in the school system, or may not have children in the school system.
That's fine.
Come here, now let's take my three minutes.
So if you could introduce yourself, please.
I'd like some of my friends and supporters, too.
So the last name is Douangmany Cage, D-O-U-A-N-G-M-A-N-Y, Cage, C-H-E. So I'd like to make sure that the chair of the school committee prioritizes the voices of parents and understand who's in the audience, and make sure that our voices are always heard first and foremost. I'm a member of the School Governance Council at Crocker Farm. It's my first experience, I was elected in the fall, and served with other folks, other parents, and other staff members of the building, and I must say that our charge is to provide input to the school improvement plan. And I feel that we could be more productive, and I felt a little bit useless with having that, being in that role and that capacity, and being limited to what we could imagine, how we could improve the experiences of the children's lives in our, in the school building. Furthermore, the process for evaluating the superintendent, I was able to look at how Brookline Public Schools, how they've done it, and they were able to give community members an opportunity to provide feedback. So as I didn't hear anything about being able to engage in this particular process, I just want to make that known, that as a parent, as a school governance council member, I'm not aware if there was any outreach to the community to get our feedback, or input, or our ideas and thoughts on the matter. So I'd like to hear the discussion about how folks were able to pull together their thoughts and ideas about reflecting on how the district has been doing, and I'd like to also depersonalize it as well, you know, because we have to really look at what have we done, what have, how have we responded as a district, where's the movement? And, and also, there's a document out there, I believe, that has come out of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and it's April 2014 revised, and it talks about the, the process of evaluating, you know, our district leader, and, and also provides guidelines or tips about how we should be grading, and that, you know, the exemplary, you know, shouldn't, should be used sparingly and carefully, because we want to be able to show progress and movement as a district. So I'd like to hear how people figured this out for themselves as school committee members. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so if I could have citizen number four, who I gave the number two, please.
That was my number, but I can't.
So if you, again, if you could say your name, please.
My name is Jean Sherlock. I just want to speak to some of the ongoing issues in this district that require leadership. First, I'm going to just quickly read the MCAS scores for the high school. All students did not meet target, high needs did not meet target, low income did not meet target, students with disabilities did not meet target, white kids met target. The middle school, all students did not meet target, high needs did not meet target, low income did not meet target, ELL did not meet target, students with disabilities did not meet target, Asians did not meet target, Hispanic Latino did not meet target, multirace did not meet target, white met target. What I want to say is that we were promised many things over the last year or so, one of them being we were going to hear from the Alana students, and that there were going to be changes based on listening to their voices. The community has gotten no feedback on that, we have no idea what happened. MCAN, yeah, you have MCAN, you like to trot that out, those kids are split between achievement gap-oriented and social justice-oriented, and the achievement gap people are the one, kids are the ones who get trotted out for public display. The family center, it's all good, but it's not a solution to inequity. MCAS groupings, I just went through that. Tracking, no insight, despite the math changes. TAB, Training Active Bystanders, is just a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. PBIS is nothing but an illusion and an empty promise, and there's still no school climate survey, with something we were being promised the entire year. Discipline disparity, as bad as ever. We've squandered opportunities to address racism with the staff, Carolyn Gardner, and also with the young man who was not allowed to go to graduation. We could have dealt with those in a different way. Affirmative action, no improvement. I'm going to cede my last minute to Karida.
Thank you. So again, if you could just introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Karida Martinez.
I'm sorry, you-
No, she's, we're still on number four.
So she's ceding the time.
Okay, well, you're saying you give her four minutes. I'm saying that if she's taking one minute from the last speaker, then the timer should be reset to four minutes.
That's if she is a-
No, no, she's ceding, number four ceded one of her three minutes.
So she only gets to speak for one minute?
One minute.
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
I'm not going to fight it, you know, so, start the clock.
I was going to let you go ahead and introduce yourself.
All right, so, first of all, I do agree that part of good government or good civil society is civil discourse, but part of that, and we shouldn't forget that, and you should be teaching your students, is that civil unrest is absolutely fundamental. So if we don't agree with what the government says, we have the right and the duty to disagree, and to do it uncivilly in any way possibly that we can. So we, you need to think about that. I also want to suggest that you change those policies. That policy that you brought up, you should be looking at it again, because I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's appropriate, I don't think it's effective, so you need to actually change it. You may use it tonight, but I don't think it's going to work forever. It's not going to work. And I also want to say that I don't hold just responsible the superintendent for what goes on in the school, this board, each and every one of you, each and every one of you is responsible. It is not just up to the superintendent, Ms. Eric, to fix all these problems. And I've heard over and over again, and I'm just going to go over a couple of seconds to finish my sentence, I've heard over and over again from several members of the board that we can only suggest, but we can't enforce, that is not true. You need to go back to your policies, and if that's what it says, you need to change it. But I don't think that's what it really says, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now number five, five, please. And if you could please introduce yourself, thank you.
My name is Sanji Johnson Anderson. Sanji Johnson Anderson, can you hear me?
Yeah. You can take it out if you want to.
Okay. I'm a member of the community, and I am concerned about many things, and one of them is the seeming effort to silence, to silence the voices of people who are traditionally marginalized and silenced. And I think that if you are sincere about your desire to have meaningful change, come to our school district, rather than limit comment, rather than limit the ideas and the suggestions of the citizens, you open the opportunities for them to come forward and to speak. I have addressed this body before, and I'm not sure whether, if, if what we've said, if what any of us have said makes a difference. I, I would implore you, please, this is the last meeting for the school year, that you listen carefully to the voices of the people who come to you. Certainly, there are other things that we could be doing this evening, many of us are missing World Cup to be here, and, and it means that this that we do is important. We know it is important to you because you have offered yourselves as leaders, and we are holding you accountable to that task. It is not a joke, the future of our children is not a joke, who we are as a people, that's not a joke, and I would ask, please, that you reverence this responsibility, okay? We are people who are in pain, one of our own suffered great harm this school year, and rather than to venture into, into, into a public campaign about how much you have done and not really done, I would ask that you really listen and open your ears and your hearts and your minds to the ideas that were coming to you. This is not our intent to, to, to attack any individual, we're not here to attack anyone. We are here to address you respectfully as a body, elected to serve, and with the obligation to listen to those of us who come before you. So, and, and I have to say that the last time I was here, while Dr. Cohen, I will, I guess I can't mention anyone's name, she was making a presentation, and we were discussing the presentation, and, and were told to shut up by a member of this committee. And I, I, I have to register that I am quite displeased, okay? And it is disrespectful, may I ask, that this does not happen again. Thank you all, and we're looking forward to some real work getting done here, we will be back, and our voices will be heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'd, I'd like to, like to close, I would like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and you can certainly stay, and I appreciate all the public comment, and I can't urge you enough, we have 24-hour chance for public comment via the internet and our email addresses, and I make a promise to, to respond within 24 hours if I'm accessing email. So now on our agenda, the school committee is going to go into executive session.
Can we just do one, just really go, and I'd like to say one thing.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, so, Mr. Baptiste.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Notwithstanding the fact that I voted against you to be chairman, I understand that being a chairman, or just sitting on this board is an august responsibility, and being a chairman is an especially august responsibility, it's the reason I voted against you, I have some reservations. But notwithstanding that, I think it is very important to be respectful to the chairman and not attack personally. I balance that with the, you know, off-site quote, that those who feel oppressed can't take dictation from oppressors of how they should respond. That being the case, it is far better for anybody's cause in a public discourse to be respectful. That is balanced also with the fact that, you know, and I'm guilty of this as well, I have to give you the benefit of the doubt of your intentions and not presume your intentions are the worst. I would ask that the public do the same. It can look as if your intentions may be the worst, but it may be a misperception. It just might be a misperception. Please don't take it personally. Please don't offer it personally. Please don't offer it personally. Hopefully, this friction can lead to positive momentum, but I don't, even though I voted against you to be the chair, I don't want to see you abused. I don't want to see you abused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you very much.
And I don't have public comments on here tonight, I mean, or superintendent. But I, it's, sorry, it's like totally disconnect from the conversations we had in many ways, but it's, it is a bit of a celebration that I do want to mention for those people who've been working very hard, and it's related to the relationship with the collaborative. So I would mention that. We found out today that the middle school has received the 21st Century Grant, that they've been working so, so hard on with, you know, Betsy and Mike Malone, as well as Jim Reagan and Marv DeGivara. And we received $500,000 for over three years for an after-school and summer program for our students at the middle school. So, I know. We have to celebrate. I just wanted to end on that positive. It's a really wonderful thing. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So now I'm going to move that the committee go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. I believe we need to have a, a voice vote. So Mr. Robb, if you would begin the voice vote to go into executive session.
I vote aye.
Stephen, aye.
Vote aye.
Abstain.
Talvin, aye.
Opie, aye.
O'Brien, aye.
Woodhouse, aye.
Trappigan, aye.
I'm trying to remember the collective bargaining, but you just mentioned the two. This is just about two positions.
Loose, aye.
Okay, so it's unanimous.
No, it's not.
No, he voted.
She abstained.
Oh, no, sorry, yes, yes. Sorry, yeah, we had one person abstain, everybody else aye.
I think Rick had, and I think someone else.
Did you have?
We're not able to discuss that.
I guess, yeah, we're not able to discuss that at this moment. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll do with Ms. Cokely, I guess, when she gets in touch with us. Thank you.
Okay, so let's find a spot.
Okay, so I want to, oh, sorry. I want to thank everybody for, in the public, for staying around, and I do want to let everybody know that I'm mindful of the, the employees, the custodial employees, so we are mindful of their time, and while they probably appreciate overtime, they might not, they might have other plans. So our intention is to try to, out of respect for our custodians, to move as dutifully as possible through our agenda. So we're now on to new and continuing business, and we have a vote regarding surplus computers. I think I'd like to begin that by taking a motion regarding, we're talking about disposal, correct? Okay, so Ms. Westmoreland reminded me that there'll need to be an Amherst and region vote, so I'd like to, at least at the regional level, take a motion to dispose of surplus computers. Do I have that motion? Mr. Baptiste, you?
I make this motion to move to appoint a warrant subcommittee composed of three members. That's not it? I move to declare the attached list of items as obsolete and direct, the Assistant Director of Finance and Observation to auction off, donate, or otherwise dispose of this material in conjunction with provision of MGL 30B.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, can I get a motion from an Amherst member?
I move to declare the attached list of items as obsolete and direct Assistant Director of Finance and Operations to auction off, donate, or otherwise dispose of this material in conjunction with provision MGL 30B.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So can I call, is there any discussion from Amherst about this issue? Can I call for a vote then on this motion? All those in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous.
And does, does anyone on the region have any questions about this matter? So not seeing any hands, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion? It looks unanimous. Thank you very much. So now we have to establish a warrant signing subcommittee for the summer recess. And I guess we'll take a motion on that because we have to take a vote on that as well? For each committee? Yeah, so for all three. So I'll take a motion for that on the regional level, and then we'll go to the Amherst.
I make a motion that we move to declare the attached list of items as? No. I make a motion to appoint a warrant subcommittee composed of three members of the school committee authorized to review and sign off on payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow for the release of checks for the period of June 25th, 2014 through August 31st, 2014.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, could I have an Amherst motion, please?
I move to appoint a warrant subcommittee composed of three members of the school committee authorized to review and sign off on payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow for release of checks for the period June 25th, 2014 through August 31st, 2014.
Second.
I move to appoint a warrant subcommittee composed of three members and the school committee authorized to review and sign off on payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow for the release of checks for the period June 25th, 2014 through August 31st, 2014. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion for Amherst?
Are you asking for volunteers, is that what?
I'm not, well, first we have to pass the motion.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor?
Okay, so now I'll go to the region. Any discussion by regional members? Mr. Baptiste?
No, I'm in favor.
Okay, so we, so we'll make a vote. All those in favor at the regional level? Thank you.
Tom, discussion? All those in favor?
Just a point of clarification, do we need to appoint people now, or? Yes? Yes, please. Anyone who's around during the summer.
Okay, so why don't we start with Amherst? I'm happy to be one of the members from Amherst. Do I have other volunteers?
Well, so I'd be happy to do it. I've done it the last two summers, but I will be away for two weeks in July, so I want to know whether or not that would impact my? Okay, so I'm happy to do it for the other weeks I'm here.
Kathleen?
I'll do it. I'm not here at the last two weeks in August, but up until then I will.
Thank you. I thought that would make sense too. So we just need Pellon.
I'm available for most of the summer. There'll be a week in August that I won't.
I'm available all summer, so.
I'm, I'm available. Are you available?
I'm, I'm hopefully going to be not available for a lot of times.
Well, I'll do it.
Okay, so thank you. And now we'll move on to item C under new and continuing business. We're going to get an update regarding the student advisory committee.
Okay. I can do that briefly. So we are fortunate, I think from, what meeting was it? Probably two meetings ago, I think the issue was raised by Dr. Shavaz asking about student advisory for the school committee. And Liz Haygood, who's a high school teacher, is going to serve as the student advisory group support person, and they held elections, and we, they actually asked if they could have seven members instead of five members. So you now have seven members who are in advisory to the school committee, and one member, they held their election, will sit on the school committee starting in September, which is Miles Olmstead, and also a member, Sajjo Jefferson, who will join the Equity Task Force. So they did their business, and we have, do you want the names? Would people like names? I don't know how to pronounce Kendall's last name. Kendall Dupreech, Gabe Fontes, Sajjo Jefferson, Miles Olmstead, John Page, Josiah Vasquez, Nina Wolf Landau, all from the class of 2015, and Josiah is from the class of 2016. So we are thrilled that they are joining us and that Ms. Haygood is supporting their work. So I think that went exceptionally well.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now moving on to item D. Earlier this year, the regional school committee created the, effectively the ROG subcommittee, and so the subcommittee that we appointed, a representative from that subcommittee, Mr. Steinberg, will be here to give us an update on their work. Thank you. And it looks like another member, Mr. Funch, will be with him. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm the, my name's Andy Steinberg. I'm the chair of the Regional Agreement Working Group, and Kip Funch is the vice chair. And I'm going to try and be fairly quick about my presentation in respect of your time and the custodian's time, as noted. And, but there is a recommendation that we'll follow, and I wanted to give you a little bit of explanation for the rec, of the background for the recommendation. There is a memo that was distributed to you, I believe, at the beginning of the meeting, and it contains more detail than I'm going to present. So more information is available there. We, you know, the history of this is that we've had a lot of very good discussions, and they, they have helped us to really focus on what the critical issues are. And I should mention that the Regional Agreement Working Group is a hardworking group, and there are, they, we are all community leaders. We are members of our town select boards. All four town select boards are represented. School committees, either present or former, are represented. Finance committee and one town administrator. So it's a fairly comprehensive and thoughtful group that have both spent a lot of time over a considerable period of time on this issue. What we have all agreed to is that we need to explore this regionalization process to include elementary schools within the current region because it is the best way to assure that we are going to have schools that are appropriate for the 21st century and that are going to provide the education that our kids need, the comprehensive educational approaches that are needed for children entering from the point when they have their first contact with the schools until they graduate from high school, and that it brings the greatest opportunities for financial stability. Having said all of that, we also recognize that there are some very difficult issues that we have been working with and working very hard on. And one of those is the question of how you design the, the district going forward in order to make that work. And there's some very complex issues that have to do with the question of what happens at the town meeting does not want to have its elementary schools at least initially participate. A second thing is the question of school continuity, I think that we all recognize, how important the elementary schools in all four towns are to the communities. They're schools, they're community centers, they are points of identity and pride for the communities, and they're, most of all, places of education for the children of the community. So we, we recognize that that is, is very much an issue. We also know from the experience of other regional districts around the state that include elementary schools, that when it becomes financially impossible to continue all elementary schools, that creates a very difficult decision. And we want to recommend to you a very thoughtful process that can take place, that will allow a future school committee, because none of us are going to be probably serving in our various capacities now when that comes up, but we want to think to the future school committee and make sure that they have a process in place that they can make an orderly decision. The financial issues are also very difficult because we have to think about how we can make sure that the, the costs, as they are assessed to the various towns, end up being reasonable and balanced. We know that that's already a difficult issue with the current region, as we found this year in the recent round of town meetings, and we, we know that this is going to be a difficult issue that we all have to be able to find a balanced approach for going forward. And the last thing is governance, and governance is a very, again, is a very difficult issue because how school committee members are allocated, appointed, elected, really speaks to how communities are represented. So there's a lot there. The process basically is, is that we anticipate that we will make a recommendation to you and that you will then take that recommendation and consider the key issues. We will explain the most critical, the decisions we've made on each of these critical points to you and why we have made the recommendations, what our considerations were. But it is the regional school committee, all of you, by two-thirds vote, who have to make a decision as to whether to place something as an amendment proposal to the four town meetings and what that is. So we're here to assist you, but it is ultimately your decision. The other thing that I wanted to just mention is that we are planning community forums in September, and those community forums are very important, and we want to make sure that the community forums have the time to be done well and to assure that members of our communities have the opportunity to learn and to be heard. We hope that all of you will participate in the community forums that are from, from your towns, and we, you know, that we need to have time afterwards to process that information. I spoke with Mr. O'Brien about this about a week ago, and what we looked at is with the original timeline that I presented at the May meeting, that would lead to a fall town meeting vote at the November town meetings, that what I have just described for you for process to handle these issues and to really do the September public forums right and to be able to listen to them, that all of that is really not realistic, given your schedule and the amount of things on your agenda. So that what we, Mr. O'Brien and I came to, as a result, Mr. Funch was a part of the discussion also, was to propose, both to you and to the Regional Agreement Working Group, that we postpone the idea of a town meeting endpoint to the annual town meeting processes in the spring, and that that will allow all of these pieces an orderly time to take place. And so that's basically what the recommendation is, and if you agree tonight, that it's appropriate to adjust the timetable to not present anything before the spring annual town meetings, then tomorrow night, when the Regional Agreement Working Group meets, we will work on a revised timetable and work plan to achieve that result. So I think that's basically it. I don't know if you have anything to add, so unless there are questions.
Well, that's what I was going to do. Anybody, does anybody here have any questions? Mr. Shavaz?
Mine is a question of the, of the various committees represented here. Do we think it appropriate for the community forums to be? for the community forums to be convened by our Subcommittee or should they be convened by our bodies themselves?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
If I understand the report from Mr. Steinberg, that ROG was proposing to hold community forums, I am wondering if that is the appropriate sponsoring authority or not.
Yeah. So I would say, in terms of sponsorship, it should be us, but we have members on the Regional Committee who I assume would be, sorry to put you under the spotlight here, but
That's what I'm here for.
All right. That you would be willing to be active facilitators of those conversations.
Very important question.
Am I assuming too much?
No, no.
Very important question. The members on the committee, now I don't want to speak out of turn for Representative Abby, Ms. Abby. You know who I mean.
Dr. Abby.
Dr. Abby. I don't want to, but I think that the members on the board would be willing to facilitate these conversations, but I think that you hit the nail on the head, that the sponsoring, the responsibility for these forums is not directly on ROG, but on the school committee. ROG has the expertise, but in our various school committee functions, we interact with the public. And in one of those interactions, we should be explaining questions, fielding concerns and questions about regionalization and using that in our own deliberations about what ROG has produced.
Thank you.
So that's the way I envisioned it and I think a lot of people on the board.
I agree. I mean, I think that the reason that members from ROG lead these public forums is because this is a group that's been working on this issue for two years? I don't know. I can't even remember anymore. But it seems like forever. But
Three years.
Almost.
Since 2011.
So.
I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. I'd actually like to exercise my prerogative and say that even though we have two very able representatives, I think it's incumbent upon everybody in the Regional Committee to attend the forums. It's really important for us to be a presence there because that's where we're going to hear from people. And that's where, and so we need to, sorry, again, to start putting it in your fall schedule, but I think, I think all of us on the Regional Committee need to be at these. Not just put it on two members. I think that's just too much. Mr. Beptis.
I don't know if this is too forward, but perhaps we can discuss a new format where we can meet as a committee. And instead of discussing school committee meetings, have a committee forum where the school committee meets to invite members of the community out to voice concerns. Not a debate, but just to find out questions from the community. I think ROG has had a lot of trouble getting a lot of attendance at our individual meetings because ROG just isn't as sexy as school committee. So I think if this was an agenda on the school committee for the purposes of community coming out and having more than three minutes to voice their concerns, that it would be well attended and of expert value for us in deciding what ROG has put together, if this is, you know, worth it or not.
Yeah, I concur. I think any way that ROG and we as school committee members can hear from the community and get that input as we go forward, that is the goal of the public forums. And so, yes, because we have had public forums in the past and they were very, very poorly attended. And then it was regionalization, but that's not sexy either.
Mr. Dover.
Just a point of clarification, I guess. Is our charge tonight to take some sort of vote on when to hold the vote? No?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Yep. Mr. Hood.
The other advantage of having school committee meetings at the ROG meetings is that then if a quorum of us shows up, we can actually talk.
Yeah, yeah.
And then also for next year's schedule, I would build in at least two regional school committee meetings to talk about this, preferably three, because it's going to take that many to work through this.
Yeah.
Would that be a regional or a joint? Would that be a regional or a joint?
Yeah, it would be sponsored by regional, but I don't think you would be precluded as a Pelham member from showing up. As a matter of fact, I'd encourage you to do that as well because it'll be a chance to hear from your constituents as well. But the sponsorship being a regional committee, it's on us. And all of it's on us at that point. In my opinion, it's not on the members of ROG, it's on us. We asked ROG to do work. ROG will be coming back. Then we have to step up. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you very much, Mr. Steinberg.
Thank you. So we will work on the timeline with the amended dates for spring town meeting and get something to you and let you know about what we're thinking about for forums and then get your feedback on that so we can move forward as planned.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
There is a meeting tomorrow night?
Oh, yeah.
We are meeting tomorrow night.
And where's the location and time?
Tomorrow night's meeting is at the middle school and the professional development center at 6:00 P.M.
Okay. And that's just, that's a public meeting?
Yes.
Yes. We encourage people to come.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Funch. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
And so, let's see. So now we will be moving on to the superintendent end of year. Sorry, let me get my motion out here. End of year evaluation. So I will entertain a motion to accept the composite end of cycle summative evaluation of the superintendent.
Do you have a copy of the motion?
Yes.
I move to accept. I move to accept the superintendent's end of cycle evaluation.
Thank you. So at this point, I guess we'll take comments regarding just the composite end of cycle summative evaluation of the superintendent. Comments or questions about that summative document? Mr. Beptis.
So I have mentioned this before. I don't think I can vote to support this summative evaluation. I have some issues with the procedure of how this summation has come up to. To me, I think statutorily, just the fact that we used evaluations from people who aren't currently serving kind of speaks ill to the amalgamation of this. It has the sum effect of lessening what the current sitting people would consider strong goals or strong, it basically dilutes the people who are sitting here, to use the people who used to be sitting here and what they think. And I think it very publicly takes away from elected officials' responsibility. Not to put too fine a point on it, but I can remember being a new school board member and being asked to vote on very weighty issues like the superintendent's contract without saying, you got a year to wait to see what you think about it. And to hear new school committee members being told not to weigh in on a superintendent evaluation smacks of hypocrisy. And the bottom line is, when you distill everybody's evaluation on what they think about the goals, you know, that came together, it skews it against what new school committee people might think. I don't want to disenfranchisize my newest committee members. I don't want to pretend as if they shouldn't have a voice until they've put in a certain amount of time, once they have been elected. And for that reason, you know, I think that I can't vote in good conscience for this.
Thank you, Mr. Beptis. Actually, Ms. Garrick.
Sure. I would just love to answer, excuse me, the question that Trevor brought up at the Pelham School Committee meeting. And we did contact the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to ask for their guidance of, given that we have three committees and we have people who come and go, did they provide any guidance of who should be actually conducting the evaluation? They do not have an advisory about who evaluates. We did explain our circumstance and how we've done this historically, that it has been the people who were involved with developing the goals and who have been seeing the progress reports over the course of the year. And they thought that made a lot of sense. And that was the agreed upon practice when we sat together as a committee with the superintendent to conduct the evaluation from day one. So again, it has to be an agreed upon process and we followed the regulations that were put in front of us. But I do, you know, I understand you've raised this before.
I hope that my vote and my public display of not confidence in that procedure will go towards making something stick. It's just not fair. If it's fair to have somebody vote on a contract and they're brand new, then it's fair to have somebody evaluate if they're brand new. You can't have it both ways. And so I'm hoping that my expressing that, that will fill the void of not having guidance. I hope my vote is guidance, that this shouldn't stand. It shouldn't be like this for this year coming up.
Thank you. Mr. Dover.
Just a comment on that. And, Mr. Beptis, I greatly appreciate your concern for the new members and our ability to weigh in as equal members of the committee. However, I do have to state my position, which is that I think it's more of a problem of timing of reorganization. And I wonder if that's maybe the issue that could solve this in a more immediate way. In that, coming in at the end of the year, when there are a lot of things that require a lot of kind of prior knowledge and education and awareness of who the parties and players are, is very difficult for everybody. I personally don't feel capable of any sort of substantive evaluation. And forgive me, I'm an attorney, so, you know, take that for however you will. I would differentiate this process from a contract because a contract is a document that is setting forth a process going forward, whereas this is looking back at several months of actions and decisions that I was not privy to. And so for my, my personal position is that I, even if I were asked to participate in this process equally, I would abstain because I don't feel that I have the knowledge to do so. I do feel that perhaps, and I don't know, you know, who the right people to talk to, is it DESI, you know, MASC, but maybe the question of should we reorganize in August as opposed to, you know, June. At the beginning of the school year, that might be a better way to handle a situation like this.
I mean, the separate committees.
Yes. Right. By that, I mean reorganizing the separate committees and new members coming in, you know, kind of like our kids. At the beginning of the school year, we all start together. That would be kind of, seemed a more smooth way to do things.
So Ms. Luce.
Or address the issue by reorganizing the evaluation cycle.
Yeah.
You know, that would be the other way to do it.
Right.
Mr. Shabazz.
I hear very much the comments of my colleagues about this and I appreciate that in respect to the notion of how a new member might sit on that or not. I think abstention would certainly, given our, within the current cycle, and I think there are good ideas about questioning, maybe adjusting the cycle. But within our present framework, I think that would be the individual newly elected member's right to abstain. My very first meeting on April 4th, 2012, I was called into an executive session to approve a raise that I had no basis to be able to do, no evaluation. And I abstained. So I think likewise, because there is a forward-looking aspect as well to this in that you are also helping to shape the work in the future direction, as we can see in this given draft, which I must say, there are some very good compelling points that are raised that I hope will be taken into consideration. I would say as well, that as we think about other ways of doing it and taking other guidance into account besides DESE, there is the, this document that was revised March 2014, prepared by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, evaluating the superintendent under the new Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System, a guide for the school committee, school councils, and parents. Loads of very, very good information that I think can definitely help us improve from this year's process, which I think started out in many ways very, very open and very democratic, but came down to a, what seems like a very rushed and kind of collapsed sort of thing at the end. One of the things they point out that I would note as well in their guidance, the number one thing they believe you should start before you start the evaluation process is to review your contract of employment with your superintendent. And to this date, I still have not seen that contract. And the other one for the new members coming in, you will very shortly be going through the MASC Academy of School Leadership and you will get a document, a binder like this with loads of information, charting the course and orientation program for Massachusetts School Committee members, which will, again, give you loads of information and I think an ability to really help us work together as a school committee to fashion a really collaborative process and one that is not quite so chair over-determined. And when we talk about this question of the role of the chair, I think this is part of what I want to revisit because there are these kinds of broad things that were stated about the role of the chair. But there are also a lot of ways in which the, if the chair can, in many ways, have, I think, undue influence over the process if we don't, if we don't work together more as a committee.
Thank you very much. Ms. Abby.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to state that I don't think actually it was a rushed process. It began at the beginning of the year in a collaboration with the superintendent. We set goals. The superintendent and the school committee looked at those goals. We, I think that this compilation, and in fact, we added an extra week this year as over last year to complete the evaluation. I thought people were very, very thoughtful in their individual evaluations and took an enormous amount of time. And I think that central office administrators provided us with a significant amount of material and data, which we added to the knowledge that we had from our experience on school committee and in speaking with community members. And so I just, I want to be careful not to characterize it as a rushed process. In fact, I thought it was a very thoughtful process. And I know that, and I'm going to speak for myself and my fellow chairs, we took enormous time and effort to make sure that we wrote a compilation that very fairly included everyone's individual evaluations to the extent that we could.
Per the regulations.
Per the regulations. So I just wanted to say that. So this really is an evaluation that is coming directly from the people who evaluated the superintendent after a very long and I think thorough process.
Thank you. Any other, anybody who hasn't, I'd really like, chance for people who haven't spoken to speak. Ms. Trapp-Hagan.
Thanks, Catherine and Lawrence and who else? No, Darius, yes, for writing this because I know it's no easy task to look at the diverse things that people wrote and try to come up with a two-page piece that is actually reflective of what people wrote. So thank you for taking the time to do that. And I think it's good. I think it does actually. I'm glad that you didn't shy away from the areas where we, as a collective body, you know, feel that there's room for growth and that you put that right in there and that you also put in places where, you know, we really have things to admire. And so thank you for that. I don't know if this is the time we're talking about the process for doing this. I know it's late because we sort of have been talking about that. I mean, I have a lot of thoughts about that, but I think maybe that's something that we're going to talk about over the summer. I do feel that it's, we, and maybe this is on the school committee, when I was doing this, I thought I'm mostly of the information that I have in front of me, it's information that's been given to me by the administration, which is awesome but limited because obviously it has a point of view. I have information from being a member of my community and things that I know. I have information from the TEL survey, which I think was, you know, very, we're lucky we had it because it gave us a good, it's a reflection of we had it, because it gave us a good, it's a reflection of what a lot of teachers in our schools think. But we didn't have any way that I knew of that we're hearing from the community this year. And I do feel that we need to figure that out, because it's kind of random. Like, people email me or see me in places and say a couple things, but that's not adequate. So I do think we need to figure that out for this, for next year. And I also feel like we, I mean, maybe it's just human nature, but those last couple days before it was due was a little bit of a crunch, and I do feel that there's an enormous amount of information that we are actually, you know, it's our responsibility to really become familiar with it, and I think next year we've got to figure out a timeline that kind of evens that out a little, so that we're not like, okay, even two weeks is not that much time when you consider that there's 300 pages of artifacts plus a 25-page self-assessment and then everything else that you want to think about. So.
So, thank you. And actually, I'd just like to, I appreciate your comment about the breakdown with having the public contributing, because, so I got into this as the acting chair right after April vacation, which was right when this process was coming to a head. So I was sort of learning on the job, and it really wasn't until after we sat down and looked at this, and I shot an email to Darius and Catherine, and I took responsibility, or at least I'll take some of the responsibility. I dropped the ball on that, and won't do that again. What I'm looking forward to is that the state, at least, my understanding is that the state is going to formalize that process this coming year. But I hear you out, and I appreciate, because I felt like that was my greatest regret.
I don't think it's you necessarily, but I think we all dropped it. I mean, I, you know, we should have said three months ago, where's the website? What's the thing?
Yeah, right.
And we, you know.
Yeah, we didn't. So, Ms. Luce.
I just would like to inquire, what would be the process at this point? This is a process question around creating a community forum as part of the evaluation process going forward.
So in August, when we meet for our retreat, we do have a conversation about the future, about goal-setting, and about the process for evaluation for next year. And then that conversation shapes the process for next year going forward. So that, I think, is the opportunity in our retreat to say, we'd like to have public feedback as part of the process, and what might that look like? In the past, we have had surveys of administrators, and we have had public comment. When we changed the system to the state model, we did not, because they had not implemented that as part of the process yet. They anticipate having for students, student feedback for staff next year, and I think staff surveys of administrators next year, and then public and administrative feedback to the superintendent next year.
But that wouldn't preclude us from adopting something like Brookline has for the 2014, 2015 school year.
So I just, actually, I would encourage, if people have something, bring it to the retreat, because we'd love to hear. I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel. And if it's a particularly effective system, bring it, we'll discuss it. That's what's great about the retreat, so anything anyone could bring would be much appreciated. Mr. Hutt.
I want to start by saying, you know, I've been here for four years now, a little bit more than four years, and if there's one thing that I've learned, I think it's that school change is a long, hard push. It's not quick, unfortunately, but it's important to keep pushing and keep pushing in the same direction. I think, you know, the fact that the average superintendent term is something like two and a half years or something is ridiculous, because when a new superintendent comes in, the reset button gets pushed, and everybody forgets what you said you were going to do five years ago. So it's really important that we remember what we said we were going to do and make sure we do it. And it won't necessarily happen overnight, but we all have to work together, the community, the school committee, and the superintendent, to make those things happen over the long term. So we really need to think long-term. I've seen some good things, I'm proud of some things in the school system, I'm not proud of other things in the school system, and that's normal. I've seen some good things happen. I've seen improvement at the middle school. When I was first on the committee, middle school was getting all kinds of complaints. You know, there's improvement left to do there, but it's improved. I've seen good changes in the curriculum coming down the pike and already have happened. So I've seen some things happen. We've seen many methods being implemented, and the implementation continues. And, you know, it's not just the methods, it's about implementation. Can you get it throughout the ranks of the teachers? And that's hard, slow, long work. So I see these methods happening, and I applaud those. This addresses the one complaint that I do have, which is around measuring, where it says additionally, committee, the committee continues to call for you to develop metrics by which progress in a multitude of areas can be measured. Without this data, it is hard to ascertain whether growth in the system is occurring and whether or not certain programs and initiatives are efficacious. So this addresses my one issue, and the superintendent knows that, and we're working on that. So I guess, you know, I just hope we can all work together over the long haul, not to repeat myself, but, you know, I just hope we can just keep going. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baptiste.
Thank you. Really quickly, I said I am not going to vote to support this collaborative thing. I think it's weighted against particularly what I feel, and I know that what I feel is not the whole of the subcommittee. So in lieu of my evaluation, I'm going to write my own evaluation up and submit it to the chairs. This evaluation was more on the high side of what I thought for the superintendent. I agree with Rick that we have, you know, some ways to go, and that's not a statement of non-support for our superintendent. But I think that the evaluation didn't accurately reflect, me personally, some of the things I thought really we should emphasize. And I think that that was a structural component of the fact that, you know, of what I stated earlier. So I plan on submitting my own evaluation to you and, well, to you, the regional chair, and publicly want to say that I think we need improvement, but I think that we have a superintendent that, you know, can still prove her capability in doing that.
Thank you very much. So any other comment on this summative document? So not seeing any? We had public comment earlier, so we're now in business mode. So not seeing any?
You could do it by your policy. You could do it.
It's a late time. So we're going to take a vote on the summative document. All those in favor of accepting the summative proposal, sorry, the proposed summative evaluation, please raise your hand. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven in favor. All those opposed? One? And two? Sorry, I didn't see. Sorry. Two? And all those abstaining? Two abstaining. Thank you very much. Would you like to?
Yes, please. So I'd like to make a comment to the committee members. I'd like to thank you all for the feedback, because this is the one time of the year, separate from our conversations that we have routinely, and we talk about topics that are not always easy to talk about, and we have, we, I'd say, agree more than we disagree. And I've appreciated the feedback on a day-to-day basis. I do appreciate very much the feedback, positive and critical feedback within the evaluation process, and I do use it and have thought a lot about it in the past, you know, week or so now, and I will use it going forward for, to kind of shape our discussions for the retreat. Again, this is a wonderful place to work, and it's an extremely challenging place to work. We have a lot to do. And we have, I would say we have many celebrations, and we also have many, many things to improve on. So I think we're all on the same page, and I was very pleased with the comments, I think, were very similar to the assessment that I would make as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so now we're going to move on to item F in New and Continuing Business regarding staffing. But I don't actually have a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't have a motion?
Oh, okay, we do. We do, actually. So let me pull it out, hang on a second. Why don't you do accept gifts?
Yeah, why don't we accept gifts? So we'll move on to G, where we accept gifts. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts at the back of our packet? Thank you very much.
So this is the motion.
Yeah, so if you want to make... We're on the gifts, yeah.
Okay, make a motion to approve the following gifts. $500 from anonymous for two community building awards. $21,134.98 from Stop &amp; Shop A-plus School Rewards for high school principal's discretion. $500 from Lexalactics, Inc. for Project Backpack 2014. $50 from Sylvia Stonem for the Joel M. Stonem Hockey Award. And $1,650.28 for Stop &amp; Shop A-plus School Rewards for the middle school's principal's discretion. For a total of $23,835.26.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the gifts, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you. And so now, can you make, can Darius make a motion?
He can.
Okay, so I'd like, okay, yep, so I'd like to have, accept a motion. I'll accept a motion for a staffing issue, change.
I move to appoint Michael Morris to the position of Assistant Superintendent of Amherst, Pelham and Regional School Districts, as recommended by Superintendent Maria Garrick, beginning July 1st, 2014.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any conversation about this? Mr. Baptiste. So we'll take a vote. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, please.
Thank you.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? So we had one abstention. Everybody else, please. So that wraps up New and Continuing Business.
Yes, thank you.
And now we'll be moving on to Calendar. So...
I think we're just going to do our next meeting in August, so I think you can adjourn each of the...
Okay, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
So, second. All those in favor of adjourning the regional meeting, please raise your hands. We're adjourning the regional meeting. Okay, looks like that's unanimous?
Yep. I'll take a motion to adjourn Amherst meeting. Make a motion to adjourn Amherst.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Motion adjourn Pelham's meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the Pelham's.
I second.
Second.
On fair?
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.